It's in mine.
Okay.
All right, welcome to your city commission study session. Please turn off or silence your cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at six P M. and midnight and available for your viewing pleasure on YouTube. So tonight we welcome our report from Dr. Adams from Unified School District four fifty-three. Welcome. How are you?
Mayor Pittman.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike Tech.
For those of not, I think I've never been to this room. I'm Dr. Adam, Superintendent for USC four fifty-three. This is my second year, believe it or not, already. Just about to wrap up semester one. So the last day of school for this first semester is Thursday for students. And then Friday we have kind of a quasi work day. So staff didn't choose whether I did work this Friday or January third. And then for the terms of purposes of students, we'll come back on June the sixth and we'll shut down our winter order. We'll be in the affected. Tonight, my primary focus is really probably the said biggest hottest topic that this district has drafted with currently. And it is related to our budget reduction. And it was certainly a large number and causing a number of different implications and a number of different decisions. But I think will have relevance to you as city governments and certainly as city planners and otherwise. So hopeful to see some parallels there that may invoke some conversation. With that, we'll get started. So really tonight, I want to talk about what is our primary issue. We're centered around the idea of significant enrollment decline. So simply put, we're losing students. I'll talk through the budgetary impacts, a little bit about what we're doing both in the immediate as well as the foreseeable future. And then really where I'm starting to shift to. Put simply, in the state of Kansas, we are funded based upon the number of kids. So more kids equal more dollars, less kids equal less dollars. The number of physical students sitting in seats, simply put, is declining. To tell a quick story, I'll take you back to April two thousand and one. The name Wayne Simeon likely rings a bell. He went to the state finals in basketball. The system was over four thousand students. Today, we are under thirty-three.
Oh, wow.
So just twenty-three years later, we have seen that big of a decline. For context, there are two hundred and eighty-six school districts in Kansas. We are one of the smallest, we're the fourth smallest geographically. We are only seventeen square miles. The metropolitan to the north, about twenty-third, twenty-fourth street to the west. Obviously, the river to the east, and then generally speaking, Muncie Road to the south. There's a little bit of a carve-out around the QT area. I won't go into any more of that. The seventeen square miles. So when I say that we are landlocked, truly, I say that in tongue-in-cheek, but it's what I mean. We are truly landlocked in the sense that there is a whole lot of area left for single-family dwellings, multi-family housing, et cetera, that is not already parcelled out and boarded up.
You mean smallest, you mean geographically, not?
Geographically, yeah.
Yeah, no. Enrollment wise.
Also, in the state of Kansas, and the other concept of what's known as waiting. And simply put, waiting is the idea of additional barriers, sometimes to the students and additional resources. The average student in Level Worth takes about seventy-two hundred dollars. So every ten students, if you can imagine, it's almost seventy-five thousand people in Level Worth. So as you can imagine, if you start seeing these large swings, the commas on that figure start adding. Then for the city of Kansas, as far as the school finance formula is concerned, we are largely tied to the statutory calculation. So our revenue is very much not unlimited. We have certain caps set in place. So generally speaking, we are at most of those statutory caps. So there's not a lot of unrealized revenue that could be, say, gone after by simple statutory or other types of governmental action by our Board of Education. Take a look at what's happened since fifteen, sixteen, so here's the ten-year history. That will likely grab your attention with a little bit of an incline in seventeen, eighteen. And then generally speaking, we have been on the downward trend since then. So again, you see here F T U, just for caveat, that's full-time at both Muncie. We often use the word headcount, that is the true number of boys and girls in our system. F T E is in the conversion of that. So an example of that is I have students that are maybe with us half-day, they're F T U and U half-day. So you'll see there we peaked at thirty-six, ninety-two, to seven, thirty-seven hundred. And this year, and again, this is at a pre-K through twelve. This includes everything from our earliest learners all the way through. And then take a look at the waiting that follow this. You'll see an even more troubling trend here. A little bit more of a roller coaster ride, so to speak, and there's some nuance to this. But generally speaking, we are accounting a significant downward trend. Where again, we were almost near six thousand on that total weighted F T E. And this year, we are just over fifty-six hundred. This is what directly impacts the colors of those. So we have like three factors that we're dealing with here. The first of which is the obvious student decline that we just talked about. And put simply, the number of K-12 students that are moving in our district. What is often confusing here for a lot of folks is that we're not seeing a decline in Level Worth proper. Not seeing a decline in the population of Level Worth County. So it requires some understanding of what's going on. What is happening is the number of what we call rug rat rooftops is actually not turning. Said differently, rooftops are not re-green. So this is where I typically ask you, think about your local cul-de-sac, local block. Think back ten years to today. Are there more or less K-12 kids running around that cul-de-sac today for ten years? And most often, I hear it's ten.
Yeah.
Typically, what I'm hearing is people are desiring to retire a place. They like living here, the cost of living, whatever that reason is, which is great. But what is happening is that rooftop is not re-greening. So as a result of our landlocked issue that I discussed previously, we have more and more rooftops that are no longer considered. That is a large concern when you don't have the ability to develop the really areas. Second thing that is converging for us here is the end of ESAR. ESAR, as an acronym, stands or represents federal stimulus that was brought on during the pandemic. What happened for a number of districts, Level Worth included, is we operationalized some of the dollars regarding loss and other types of initiatives. What's happened now is that as those federal dollars are drying up, you've got operational costs that either are needing to continue from another source or needing to stop. And then just like you all, the third thing, of course, is the impact of inflation. We're seeing large, oftentimes six-digit figures of increased expenditures and things such as property casualty insurance, health insurance. Here's a look at your individual waiting that I break down. And again, I won't go into all of this. This will give you, again, a good trend. And even as the district does have demographic changes, we are, of course, subject to a number of different, I would say, connections that make us unique. We have the military connectedness that is really unique, especially in Kansas. We have a connectedness to some of the other demographics that are specific to this town. But regardless of how much that fluctuates, you're going to see those total waiting per continuing to send a downward trend over the last decade. Probably the one that weren't consistent for us, and it's really small, is with regard to our bilingual and our C T E. But again, those are small parts of it. And if you look at at-risk, and at-risk in Kansas is defined by students qualifying for free lunch. It's the green bar, if it's printed in color for you. Just look at the fluctuation there in the city at risk. We've been as high as twenty-six percent, dropped down as low as eighteen. That has a significant impact of dollars loaded to the issue. Context, every student that qualifies at risk brings within twenty-five hundred dollars. So every time a student does or does not qualify, that's a twenty-five hundred dollar salary. So as I alluded to, we're seeing natural, as expected, increases with inflation for those utilities and insurance. And the third thing that we're having, as I'm sure you are as well, is this increasingly competitive labor. And the context here that's probably important is in a industry that is grappling already with enough on the recruitment retention side, is really difficult right now to properly retain or serve that. Especially considering how many districts are within what we consider reasonable driving distance. So trying to say competitive because wages is crucial to our staff, but is also really even more, I would say, difficult based upon the number of districts that folks drive to, that does not require any move. You might be asking, what are our next steps? First thing that's probably the most important is understand that our system is based upon approximately eighty-five percent. I do want to make something very clear here. We did not spend our way into this problem. In fact, the reason why I'm not more concerned now is because we have been so fiscally conservative to date. That's why we were going to be able to shelter the storm and weather the storm. But at the same time, I want to make it very clear for anybody listening, we did not spend our way into this issue. This is largely and or entirely a trip to loss. Second there, there you go, on the second line, we've got to follow the tier progression step. Second. And then finally, the biggest piece for us is looking at how do we execute the necessary steps to reduce our expenditures with out-of-impact. And as parents, grandparents, wherever you're at on that spectrum, cousins, nephews, et cetera, I hope you would appreciate we're going to try to minimize the impact to kids and minimize the impact to teachers. That, of course, is easier said than done. So what are we looking at in the grand totality of this? Two-point-five million in reduced general spending. That's from the head. The less kids equals less dollars, that number's two. The second number, I will argue, is somewhat conjecture at this point in late December. But we'll become probably more clear as we get some of those renewals. Based upon initial data we're getting from, say, utilization of health insurance, we are expecting an increase. In fact, we have reason to believe it will be a significant. So we're hedging on the idea that that is another two-year happen. But then you will see, believe it or not, just in two fiscal years, we have lost nearly ten percent. So that grand number is five million dollars. And that must be done by basically the end of this fiscal year, I D H.
How does, um, my revenue neutral add to this number?
So the revenue neutral decision does not have an impact with this. However, does it represent an opportunity next year? The answer to that is yes. I'll go into that here in just a second. For this current year, the revenue neutral decision did not have an impact. Good question. So I'll come back to that. So where do we go from here? One of the biggest questions that I'm asking right now is obviously where are the kids going? One of the biggest things we are seeing is related to something that I would argue is largely out of any of our control. And it is the repopulation of the United States and of Kansas and of Level Worth County. Our largest classes are walking across the stage. Smaller classes are entering pre-K.
Yeah.
So when you ask, what are you doing about that? I'm not sure what exactly we as a system should do, other than promote good family planning. But also repopulation, right? And so that is part of our quandary, is the stage left or stage right in graduation is a larger class than my incoming. The second thing is an evaluation of what I call all of our half-in-queue. So I use this frequently, you've been on the airline, it's number two, that's been canceled. You're going from Miami to, let's say, San Antonio, and that plane didn't quite fill. Whatever that threshold was for Southwest, they're going to not fly that tonight. You've got to start making some of those tough. This will largely impact our second. We will have classes that, say, have five, six, seven kids, that may not be able to be offered it. We may have to offer them every other month once a semester or combined. You get to get. The implications, though, is that will have an impact. It is, certainly. Right? And then finally, for us, it's a large on the future plan. Every time a position turns over right now, it's a really tough conversation about, do we need to? Does that position have to exist? Is that one we can temporarily suspend? Can those duties be combined with somebody else? Is that something we can live without for, say, a year, six months, you get to get me? Every time a separation occurs, it's not just about think about tomorrow, it's think about the implication for that. So here's kind of our progression, as we'll get back to your questions there. First is, we have to identify any additional. As you know, the biggest piece of revenue that hangs out there is kids. I have in my mind that there are some that left the district by choice. I would like to obviously target those, target those families, so to speak, and help understand, why did you leave our district? Were you unhappy with, fill in the blank? Can we resolve the one blank so that they can repatriate back? In my mind, some did not necessarily leave Level Worth, they left Level Worth School, of examples. Second to the additional revenue is we did go revenue neutral. That was a decision made in August. That was in the capital LA fund. So it did not impact the decision or the implications here, but it does represent additional revenue for our district. What can happen there is we can raise that mill rate back up to the mills. And our capital LA could partially take, say, the maintenance and/or building-related expenses. So you could transfer some of those operational expenses to them. Though that would represent a piece of this. But to be clear, it did not, it did not base the five million dollars.
Did you go revenue neutral two years in a row or just?
So it would have been FY, we're in FY twenty-five, so then FY twenty-three, twenty-four, we had CED. So it was long on. And the third one, you may have heard this term a time or two, is impact aid. You've likely heard it, it's typically associated with places where there is largely taxing on property. That is not able to generate revenue. That's not really the situation here. We do have some of that industry. The impact aid that impacts us is actually federally connected to. So this was some new learning for me and certainly others in our system. The best example I can give you is if a parent of one of our students works at the VA, they qualify for impact aid. If we have a parent, yes. If we have a parent that works at the.
I was a parent that worked at the VA, I didn't know that.
So your student, students would qualify for impact aid whenever that day.
Wow.
If they were, uh, merged, slay the pet century.
That's your activity.
Obviously, the Ford, that's the no-brainer.
Yeah.
And then there are two properties in Kansas City, and I apologize if I don't have the address, but they're both federal buildings, they're both all within our kitchen. We've already identified approximately three hundred students.
Okay.
Well, every student qualified is five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So it's a real dollar. The nuance to this is we've got to have proper paperwork and documentation about other families. Families don't really get anything. This is kind of back to that quandary on that free reduced issue for me, really free lunch, sorry. Issue one, brand new paperwork turned in by families, it doesn't impact them necessarily.
Yeah, right, right, okay.
So the impact aid presents an initial level for us that an approach appropriately could help.
Okay.
So those are kind of the three main areas of revenue for me. Second is what I call the low-hanging fruit. Those are the extras, we want to call that, the stuff that has really low to no impact. Take the number of subscriptions, have you ever looked at this at your house? I'm asking this of my wife right now, do we really need all these subscriptions? For us, it's, you know, the Netflix and Paramount Plus for the district, it's not those, just clear right here. But there's subscriptions that we have for software, for curriculum, et cetera, that we could maybe find a way to live without. That makes sense?
Yeah.
That will have loads of no. We then move into higher effect, which starts looking at reductions. You're going to see that dash right on the page. That is intentionally set. Because right now, it's like, I'm telling you, that's where we're stopping. You don't need to cross that line. It starts really cutting to the bone, so to speak, when you start talking about the delay or minimization of raises or in some cases taking. We're not entertaining that. And that's finally, we're not entertaining the reduction, of course. Actually, the force is we are asking for voluntary, if you will, and handed for other patients. And now we are going to do the voluntary separation that occur. There will likely be people that will be asked to be sitting in new seats on the bus, but they will still have a seat.
Yeah.
Natural attrition will largely be used, I would say, is that very important. So let's talk a little bit about the future. First is, we need to understand that we need to have an outward projection on this. The demographic data that we have says that we are not done with our decline yet. This will largely be a huge piece of it, but we can expect more insofar that housing and other trends do not change within the district. Generally speaking, the district's boundaries are your boundary, right? We share, I would say, the story of those boundaries together. So in an organization that's largely personnel, we have to be extremely strategic about where we place people, where we pay people. It is the number-one cost driver for us. It's also the number-one reason how we get our business done, right? The number-one most impactful thing, without a question, is the teacher and the customer, right? And then the big thing for me is we cannot stop the district moving forward. So you've got to have this onset that, hey, this is a storm, that we will weather, we will get through it, and we will move on to government. We've got to continue to make decisions that ultimately reflect our strategic plan. I do realize that this is painting probably a dark cloud over the current school year and annual year for you guys. And I apologize for that, because I know there's implications for your employees, for others in the city. It is the current reality, but I do believe we can get through it, and I believe we will see improvement.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Um, are you seeing an increase in the amount of military who are bringing their families with them?
So I would say our military connectedness, which is largely at the high school level for us. I can kind of explain.
Right, that's, yeah, that makes sense, because they're.
Has not really fluctuated, believe it or not.
Okay, okay.
For context, we usually see mostly nine people.
Okay.
And I think that's primarily because Port two oh seven has elementary buildings, but they don't have the high school. Does that make sense to you?
I teach art to homeschool. Are you seeing some home school, more home school people?
Sure.
Kids?
So if I look at where and or why, both why, it's an accident, some are going to surrounding districts. Because some are exiting K-12, at least public K-12, either entering private K-12.
Okay.
Now, these are not like double-digit type.
Just to.
We are seeing what I would call exit slight choice. Does that make sense?
Do we still have a virtual school program?
We have a virtual school program through the.
And then, and the last question I have is, do you think? We're always looking, we're looking at affordable housing, you know, building more affordable housing. We do have, we're not totally landlocked. We do have places that we could, we could focus on. How could we help? Would building more affordable housing help?
So I ask this question, because everybody's asking, how do we help, right? I firmly believe that this is primarily. I recognize fully, for anybody listening, that we've got some issues as a district to resolve. I own those, and I'm committed to resolving them. I believe we can have people that have left my choice and I'm going to bring them back. But I do not believe that this decline has all happened just because people left.
Yes.
I truly believe this is largely tied, element specifically on residential housing. So my short answer to your question, I know is not a short answer, is providing more affordable housing, specifically within our district number.
Yeah.
And as the dreamer in me starts looking, there's only so many parcels left, at least in the district's boundaries. One way to go is that, right?
Yeah, right.
And so are we ready to have those conversations? Are we ready to reimagine C-one properties that have no longer need for traditional commercial indoor industrial needs from twenty years ago?
Sure.
That are becoming vacant or otherwise? Are we ready to entertain those conversations as a city? I am. I want to be at the table for that.
Who want to hear that? Hear, hear from you, yes.
Yes, I think we do, I think we do too, so. Absolutely. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Other questions, thank you.
Expel, expulsion, so when students are expelled, what happens?
Sure. So when an expulsion occurs in the state of Kansas, the maximum is a hundred and eighty-six.
Okay.
So generally speaking, that expulsion will go from the date of, let's say, it's September one, till the following September. Right? Meaning that student is likely without service for the entire time. What happens oftentimes, we see, is that students do not come back to the district because the family decides to seek other services if they have. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If they do not move, they are entitled to come back after serving that one period. Is that out?
Yeah. So are they able to enroll in online?
Sure. They can take online, and some do. So I was referencing what happens, a lot of folks, they'll go, hey, we are willing, they don't want to wait a year for that. We're going to go enroll in a Lawrence Virtual School, or some of the other virtual schools throughout the state. Which as long as they're willing to accept them, can do that. But sometimes it is the best path for a student in that situation. But sometimes you'll see families that get frustrated, they either leave and go across the state line, they'll leave for the state, et cetera. And of course, it's dependent upon that system. Because in Kansas, the one requirement for us to accept you is you have to live in the district. As long as you live in the district's boundaries, we are bound by the law.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And bullying, has it increased, decreased? Have you been receiving several complaints or is it getting better this year?
So I personally am not getting those complaints. I am confident that we have bullying going on in some form. I would be, I'd be lying to you if I said we didn't have bullying at all in our schools, right? But I have data that supports that a lot of our issues related to classroom behavior, related to behaviors, et cetera, really significant and positive power trend as it relates to our work that we started really the start of the school year, we're seeing.
Okay.
Very motivated and encouraged by the initial data I've seen.
All right, and last question. Two top concerns that come from your teachers.
Two top concerns?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I have a photo finish here. First, I would say from, again, I'm just speaking from a general term of life, it would be classroom.
Okay, yeah.
So those that are disruptive. And I would say it has changed a little bit from what I heard last year. What I heard last year was these kind of more extreme behaviors.
Yeah.
Those that are leading to long-term suspensions, etc. Those seem to have died down, at least the complaints on that side. It's more now to those that are not necessarily considered more egregious.
Yeah.
But are still disruptive in nature. So you're one child taking away from the learning of twenty-two others.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, every public.
It's frustrating for the twenty-two, it's frustrating for their parents, it's frustrating for an educator, you can.
Yeah.
The second is a more general statement, just a lack of appreciation for the teaching profession.
Yeah.
A lack of respect for the teaching profession. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Not to go way back into history, but my grandfather was superintendent, grandmother was a teacher. I come from a lineage of educators. Generally speaking, I will tell you, they were largely respected and heralded in their communities. Just for the respect of the work that they did.
Yeah.
I have not seen that anymore for our education.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, I'm seeing them deemed as, you know, the demon, so to speak, and they are the ones that are not doing the good work anymore and or are not the first advocates for kids, et cetera. I don't see that as a reality, that is unfortunately common.
Yeah. No, I appreciate you, and I thank you for everything that you have done, everything you continue to do, and thank you for just being a voice for the teachers as well as the students. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate this. I appreciate your just being transparent with us and to the community. This is good stuff, this is what the community is known here, so. I'm right there with you, we need more, we need more housing. And we're committed, I mean, I know I'm committed to that, so.
Well, when we hear the reports, I mean, I just read one about Kansas birth rate declining, you know, over the years, and they have, it has declined. But I think right here in our community, the cost of rents have gone up so high that we're dealing with, you know, the attainable housing group and with others, you know, to try to, you know, look at, look at the people who work in our community that, that need affordable housing. And there, there are neighbors, there are, there are bankers, there are people that work at the bank, there are people that work at the restaurant. They all have kids, you know, and we need to, we need to make sure that they have housing that they can afford. And that will make everything better, I mean, it'll make the kids going to school better, too.
But I was gonna say, kids are expensive.
Yeah, they are.
There's so many at the college, you need college. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Adams, appreciate it.
Scotty, you have anything? Okay.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Enjoy that baby's first Christmas.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right, next on agenda is our state legislative agenda for twenty twenty-five.
All right, I'll take over for that. So presenting to you a quick policy report on what the League of Kansas Municipalities has deemed to be their priorities for the upcoming legislative session, which is coming up quickly, begins January thirteenth. We have kind of three different areas that we monitor or keep an eye on. We monitor bills and issues that move forward in the House and Senate, bring any bills that would have a positive or negative impact. Bring any bills that would have a positive or negative impact to the city to you guys for support and or opposition. And for the commission's goals, we will make every effort to bring requests for letters of support or opposition to city commission meetings of specific agenda items. Some of the things that we are already doing to prepare for the legislative session. We are, Penny and myself are setting up meetings with state representatives and their staffs. I think we have two this week and I think one set up in January, so we're already moving forward with that. And then we are.
We used to have, we used to every year have a night that we all got together and then like a dinner. Legislative luncheon, yeah. We had everybody here, so, so we could kind of hear all around, you know? So that, I mean, this is great, this is good, yeah. This is good too and continue with, continue with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Because, because we got to do, we got to do that, but maybe some, at some point. Get them all together if they will come. Sometimes they won't.
Okay, and then we'll, we're attending our twenty twenty-five legislative preview webinar held by LKM to kind of go over their priorities here. We're also hiring, or soon be hiring, an assistant to the city manager, so that will be the open desk in front of my office. Part of their duties will be directly monitoring the legislative session and keeping Penny and myself informed on any.
That's great. We need, we need that, it's good.
Yep. So the policy itself, which should be in your packet, has over a hundred issues and probably will not all be at the top of the list for LKM. But they did provide seven priority items. Of those seven, I highlighted four that I think particularly affect the city of Leavenworth. Home rule, so their, this is their priority pretty much every year is, is ensuring the home rule of communities like Leavenworth. So we obviously have, as you've seen on Facebook comments and all that, have a unique election style here at the city of Leavenworth that some people have their thoughts and opinions on, but that's.
Not all that unique. There's like nineteen cities in the state of Kansas that have the same.
So.
Tell them of that.
So every, anyways, they're, they're committed to helping us continue what we feel is the best, the best approach for the community of Leavenworth. Sales tax exemptions, as you're all aware, they already, the legislature already removed state sales taxes for groceries. There's been some discussion on grabbing, we're getting rid of local sales taxes for groceries as well. Obviously, being such a sales tax dependent community as we are, that would be a huge hit. I think early numbers calculated up to a million dollars a year in lost revenue for the city of Leavenworth, so that's a huge hit. So obviously, that's very important to us and making sure that LKM is fighting that effort for us and that, and that we're also bending the ear of our representatives on how important it is that we, we keep that revenue.
Could they, say, can they take that away?
That's like overstepping our home rule again. That's going back to that first one.
They have the.
I know they have tried.
Some would argue they have the authority to do it. Whether they have the majority of votes to do it, I don't know. And I don't, and I'm breaking, I don't know whether Laura Kelly has, has indicated whether she would support that or not either. Those are all things that I think we should have with our representatives and with LKM and make sure that everybody's on the same page. That in particular, if the legislature wants to remove sales taxes that are statewide, that's well within their right to do so, that they should leave local municipalities' rights alone in terms of taxation. Mental health and housing kind of go together here. They also have homelessness on the list, but obviously, we're dealing with homelessness issue in the, in the city of Leavenworth. And as we've all noted, some of the frequent flyers, so to speak, are people that are really dealing with serious mental health issues. Also of note, as Miranda said during her presentation a month or two ago, mental health also is an issue in people who are housed. And so, and that affects our community here in and out of homes. So I think we should be paying particular attention to the efforts that the state will be providing for resources for mental health and homelessness. I think both mental health and homelessness are really more regional problems than they are one community can solve. And so I think whatever help we can get from the state would be very beneficial for this community. And also, any regional opportunities, I think we'll keep an eye on and be sure to be a part of. We've already, we met with Mid-America Regional Council and brought that up with them as well, that we would be willing to jump on any programs they have. So again, housing, as we were going to discuss, lack of quality housing across the state increases, creates an impediment to growth and economic development. We support and encourage access to quality housing and any kind of tax credits or incentives that would support the kind of housing that we were looking for. I think Penny and I are on the same page that it is important to be strategic in the kind of programs and incentives we provide to make sure that we are building the houses we are looking for. If we build, if we incentivize senior housing that is going to bring seniors in from the metro area to kind of downsize and get out to a more expensive area of the metro, that doesn't really solve our housing.
Right.
It doesn't solve the school district housing problem.
No, it doesn't.
So more, more importantly, what houses are we building and who's moving into them? Is, should be, we should be very strategic about that. A couple other items for consideration, property tax exemptions. Again, kind of similar, the, the state has toyed with with the ideas of removing the local municipality's ability to levy their own property taxes or handcuff it in some way, so just keep an eye on that. Tax policy and spending, we'll be closely monitoring the proposed changes to the Kansas No Levy System, including the appraisal process. The LKM believes that local spending and taxing decisions are best left to local officials, which we certainly agree with. And we join them in opposing state imposed limits on the taxing and spending authority of cities. And again, touching, touching back on our city elections. There have been some efforts by, I'm not, I would not say a majority of people, but still nonetheless, people making noise on making local elections partisan. We, our staff and I believe the commission agrees that that would not be ideal for the city of Leavenworth and that the lack of partisanship is what allows us to work together and get things done on a community basis. So we would certainly hope to, to join LKM's efforts in opposing that.
This almost passes every year, so. With so many people working for apartment events here, they would not be able to be in our elections, so.
Yep.
Well, and the, the property tax exemptions. That, that comes up as a bill almost every year too, by big companies wanting to be tax exempt. And that's one thing we don't need here.
Yep. Absolutely.
I think those are all very important things and I looked over all of the league's things, but I think as far as the city of Leavenworth, it's, this is, these are good, they're all good. But I think the big one is stepping on our home rule, unfunded mandates, you know, telling us we have to do things and not funding it to do them, that we have to take them out of our own. So I think those are all, I don't want to be an adversary with our state legislature, but sometimes it comes, comes to that when they propose some of these things, so. I'm glad you guys are reading.
When you hire someone, I assume they'll give you some type of report. Can you put that in your weekly update or something that you need to know about?
Yeah, these things happen so fast, you know?
No, I mean, we will certainly do that. We'll provide frequent updates and the weekly updates, that's what that's for. But we will also provide you more structured reports from time to time as well to be a little more comprehensive and have that conversation with you to make sure that we're heading in the right direction. So.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I think almost the legislative issues that come up sometimes, those are like a quick report, you know, a quick report. Even right now, this is going to come up on Thursday, you need to, you need to know about it so you can contact your legislator.
Yep.
Those, those are good too.
We had, this isn't legislative, but it's kind of for us. We had talked about, I think, I don't even know if it was at venue hearings or if it was works at schools, having like a state of the city thing to have. Potentially bringing that back. And that's put you on the spot because it would be. I think Paul did a lot of it, didn't he?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, and we have a little lunch, I think it got, got, I don't know what happened with any partner with Fort Leavenworth, I don't know what happened. But it would be nice to have something like that back. The city of Lincoln Business is really nice and.
It depends on how, how we did it. We were doing it in the evening as a presentation, but we were in there with the county and with, and it was long and it was not good. We need to have our own, own thing.
Yeah.
Starting thing, yeah.
So we can look into that. I think we were all on board and we have to wait till the other two commissioners come out, but.
Yeah, I think they were too.
Have something like that.
Was it like open to the public or what?
I think we, did we do a lunch? Was there food?
It was snack, is someone that the community was in there?
You know, if we did, no, if we did something like, I mean, the thing that they did before was kind of like the chamber forums, you know, and they, and the chamber actually put, put on some of those. But, but.
It would be a lunch in a long time.
If, if, you know, if you had like a reception or something, snacks or whatever, and just had people come in if they wanted to.
But I think it'd be nice to have, you know, that open, people can ask questions.
Got to have food, people will come.
That's true.
I mean, it's true. Unless you got a really hot topic. Should discuss.
Yeah, I think we were all on board at having something like that. I want to say, was it before budget, were we talking about, did I submit in April?
I think, yeah, before budget, before we start doing budget, well, goal setting and that would be good. I mean, we could talk about our goals.
What we've accomplished.
Yeah, we've accomplished, you could talk about what we've accomplished.
Okay.
Since you've been here before.
Three months I've been here.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, we'd be happy to figure something out.
That'd be, that would be good.
Okay.
Anything else?
I got a deal, Holly, it's good.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get more communication with the.
Strategic communication, yep.
Um, anything else? Is that anybody a question? Scott, you have anything else?
That's it for this, just like I said, we'll, we'll keep an eye on things. We'll provide weekly updates, but also we'll, we'll be sure to have periodic conversations with you where we can actually sit down and talk with you all and just make sure that we're representing you well at the state level and that our representatives are too. I'll, I'll be sure and reach out to our representatives and see if we can get, get you in, in front of them as well. So, or them in front of you, I should say.
Nancy, anything to speak?
This is our last meeting before Christmas, so everybody, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And I guess we won't see until after New Year.
Yeah, when's our next series?
January fourteenth.
Man.
Twenty-five.
He's still got a job.
So I, I will be around, other than the, the early release on Christmas Eve, I'll, I'll be here. So you guys need me to reach out. And the rest of our staff is kind of, I'll be here, so.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for.
You just want to invite parents, students, children out to Grand Christmas this upcoming Friday at six PM through eight PM. We're actually going to be distributing toys to the kids in the community. You get an opportunity to get a picture with Santa Claus as well as Shorty Claus.
Oh, Shorty Claus is coming out.
The location is six one six Grand Avenue, Harvest Christmas International Church. I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas. God bless and Merry Christmas and Happy New Years, Happy Hanukkah, and whatever holiday you celebrate. Love you.
Awesome. I have one question, how is Fourth Street and stoplights?
Just very quickly, I would think they might be operational by next week.
Really? Good.